John, you need to unmute.
I thought I did. There we go. Good evening to everyone. Welcome. It's good to have you all together on this second longest night of the year. Yesterday was the solstice, the longest night. We welcome Father Ryan Thornton, who's with us tonight. A number of our staff members are here. Ryan, when was it? How many years ago that you were here for a time doing some internship?
I think it was seven years now.
Seven, wow. And since then, you were ordained as a Franciscan priest. And what year was that?
That was 2015. I think that was the last time I had a chance to see everybody in person was right after that.
Yes, we celebrated that event with you. So it's 2015, five years ago. And since then, you've truly been a Roman Catholic. You were roaming in Paris. You were roaming in Rome and other parts of the world. And your studies in Paris gave you a doctorate?
That's right, yeah.
So I have to call you Doctor Father or Father Doctor?
You know, the way that I say is because when I was there before, I was just Brother Ryan. And so that's kind of like my maiden name. So at St. Perpetua, I'm just Brother Ryan.
Okay, well, we'll stick with that. Why don't we begin with a brief prayer, the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit? Let us pray. Christ, we eagerly await your coming and we respond to your invitation to journey with you. Help us to be like John the Baptist, so we may recognize and announce your love to a world in darkness. Spark our creativity, so we may create the way to your justice and peace. Working with one another to open new vistas, to promote new ways of being in community and in communion. May the wings of the Holy Spirit open softly within us as we approach the feast of the incarnation, the feast of Christmas. We ask this through Christ our Lord.
Amen.
So since about May, Ryan, we've been having a these Wednesday gatherings to try to keep ourselves together as a community. And each week has been a different topic. And I was very glad to get an email back from you from Rome, of all places, telling me that you're going to be in town and would be glad to join us. And I appreciate you selecting the topic of the incarnation, two days before our celebration of the incarnation. And I think we have our pencil and paper, at least I have mine at hand. I hope the others do or can easily get hold of one. So welcome, Ryan. The floor is yours.
Thank you so much, Father John. And it's great to be with you all, albeit in this virtual fashion. It's a delight. It's an absolute delight. And indeed, what I'm just going to talk about, guide us through in the next few minutes, the time that we have together, is a reflection on the incarnation, what we're about to celebrate in just two days' time. The fact that God became one of us. And so for Father John told me that you guys were well versed in doing breakout groups and so forth. I'd like to go straight into a breakout group. I don't know how you organize it, but with the question, this will be the question, is why did God become one of us? That's what I'd like you to talk about amongst yourselves. And then when we come back, maybe each group can just share with the group at large, some reflection that came out of what you all discussed. So that's the question I want to pose to you right now to reflect on together, which is, why did God become one of us?
Great. Kristoff, you're gonna break us up into
How many?
One or two, five or six people, maybe?
Okay.
And those, you know, the rules of small groups, give everybody an opportunity who wants to speak. And we'll take about seven minutes to do that till 7:15 or so. And you'll get a signal when that'll tell you you've got like a minute left.
How many minutes did you say, Father John?
About 10 minutes, seven, eight to 10 minutes.
Okay, there we go. And you have to click on join when you see this, okay? So here we go.
Why did God become one of us?
If you're not in a breakout room, you have to accept and click join, okay? Whatever you see on your screen, click join. Barrett, you did not join the room. Marie Bernier, you did not join the room. Mary Ellen, looks like you did not. Oops. Now we... Bonnie, did not join the room. Virginia, you did not join the room. Vera, you did not join a room. Bonnie, you did not join. Bill, did not join. Tedesco's did not join.
Kristoff, I just have a quick question. There will be a point where I'd like to share my computer audio for, just so that people can listen to something while they're writing. Do you remember, I'm having trouble remembering where that function is, where I share the audio that I myself hear.
Okay, so once you click Share Screen on the bottom, the green button, then the next screen that you see on your computer, that's the only one you see, it gives you the option to select, you know, it says optimize audio for video or something like that. Okay, before you click Share, the green button to the right, you want to make sure that those other two boxes are checked.
I see it now. Okay, perfect.
Okay, you see what I mean?
Yeah, thank you.
Okay.
I think we're all back, Ryan. And I forgot to mention at the beginning that some of the some of the young members of St. Perpetua are here, some of our confirmation candidates. So we're happy to have them with us.
Fantastic. Could I have someone from Group One who would like to just share some of your reflections? Or is there a better way of inviting the large group, Father John?
Yeah, let's just open it up to anyone. Just unmute yourself and...
Well, okay, our group had like three schools of thought. One being, and I'm paraphrasing, so apologize to anybody who I botch it up, one is that came to repent and pay the price for our sins. One view was that he basically came to teach and role model, because we're kind of dumb human beings. And if you don't teach in spoon fetus, we may not get it. And the third is that he came to learn to be a as a human, he learned to love by living as a human being and learn the things of living in a family. Those are the three, I think, that came up in our group.
But thanks, Brian.
Yeah, would someone from another group like to go? Please?
I'll go for Group Five. We also agreed he came to show us how to live better lives. But one that came up that was kind of different, I hadn't heard thought of this way before, was that in before he came, most of the leaders of the time were military people and kind of hard ruling types. And then he came and he showed us how to love one another and that love should be what was a more common source and kindness in a leader. He also wanted people to follow him out of love. And he needed to become one of us to relate to us, to be relatable to us. And that he loved us so much, he wanted to be with us.
For Group Six, God came to understand us better, to know what it is to be human, to give us an example, help us, and to help us appreciate that we matter.
Thank you. Someone else?
Our group talked about how he came so that it was easier for us to understand and for us to follow him. And then also, since Jesus suffered, then we know that when we suffer, he also understands what we're going through.
Great, thank you. Maybe one last representative from a group?
Well, I see that God was compelled out of love to share God's life. And so Jesus came to show us how to love and how to live. But the whole concept that God came out of love to share God's life.
Thank you very much, Sister Peggy. Thank you all for those reflections and for what you did in your small groups. And what's fascinating is that I heard many different strands and not necessarily ones that I was expecting. And in the Christian tradition, there's largely two lines of thought about why God became one of us, what we call the motive of the incarnation, the reason. And basically, we hit upon them already. One comes from this person, the theologian called Saint Anselm of Canterbury. He lived in about the 11th century. He had this vision of God as being king and human beings being his subjects. And that basically, human beings had disobeyed God. And as a result of disobeying God, of rebelling against God, they were under this perpetual eternal condemnation. And God didn't want to leave it there, but being an infinite being who had been infinitely who'd been infinitely disregarded or dishonored, there had to be another infinite being who could repair that infinite damage. So he sends his son, who basically frees, frees all those who say, who recognize him as offering himself, as making things right. Anyone who believes in that can then enter into the king's house. They are free of their condemnation, and now they're in a right relationship with the king. In this view, really, the centerpiece is sin. That's why this whole thing happens, where God sends his son in order to become one of us, because that's the only way that this group of people who've done wrong can be made right with the king. At the center of it is sin. And that's where Brian was saying, someone described as paying the price. God's son came, pays this price, and makes things right. And then what's interesting is that there was a lot of talk about him coming to show us, Christ coming to show us as a role model to teach us how to live. And so what's interesting about that is it can kind of go either way, depending on how you look at it. Is he showing us about how sinful we are and we need to get things right? Or is he showing us, as many people reflected, on how to live, how to relate to one another, and how to relate to God? And see, here's the second line, the second view of the incarnation. SCOTUS, John Donne SCOTUS was a Franciscan theologian, and he lived at the turn, or he was writing at the turn of the 14th century, beginning of the 1300s. And he said, Anselm had too many things going on at one time. He was talking about actually multiple things. In the first place, he talked about this idea of condemnation, about this lasting perpetual legacy that God fixed. But that is only one part, because he's also talking about us entering into God's mansion. In the words of St. Paul, we become God's adopted children, his sons and daughters, by virtue of his son becoming one of us, the second person, the Trinity. And so if you have these two different dimensions, you see, okay, that whole business about the legacy, the condemnation, sin is one part. But then there's this other part about God wanting to make us part of his family, to have a deeper, more profound intimate relationship, not just the subjects to their king, that's kind of very distant, but actually as a parent to their children. And if that was the ultimate goal, then sin was just this part of this story. It ended up being an absolute part that happened, but not a necessary part. The real story, the real beginning, the real machine was started because of God's love. Because God wanted to do something more than just create us, he actually wanted to unite and become one of us. In that deeply profoundly relatable way that many people described. And as a Franciscan, that's the line that I go with, is that God became one of us out of love, simply put. And in this time, I know many of you are, probably bought gifts for people. And it's very simple. We can use this analogy to explain it. When your kids or your nieces or nephews were younger, did you wait until they did something wrong to give them a gift? Because that's what the Anselm line suggests, is that God wouldn't have given us this great gift of uniting with us unless we had done something wrong. By contrast, SCOTUS's position is that God loves us so much that he wanted to give us this gift of a union with him from the very moment of creation, when God made the world. And I think we know from our experience that we give gifts out of love, not because someone does something wrong, because of who they are and who they are to us.
You know, Ryan, one time I heard it expressed in a clever way. It says, Jesus wasn't Plan B.
Exactly.
You know, he was Plan A. From the very beginning of time, from the in God's very being, the gift of Jesus was there as the plan. It wasn't like, oh, well, now they blew it. I gotta do something. So here's Plan B. I'll send Jesus. But he was there from the beginning. I think too, that's where that image of the cosmic Christ, that he is there from the very beginning, is part of the cosmos, part of the mind and heart of God.
Yeah, the incarnation happened whether there was sin or not.
Yes.
Because of God's love.
Which is who God is.
Yes.
So now I'd like you to take your papers as we go to the next part of the evening, which is, I want you to draw a nativity scene. I'm going to put on some music, and so just for about four or five minutes, just draw a nativity scene. It's part of our exercise today.
No, you're not kidding.
[Music]
Okay, so now my question to you, as you're looking at your nativity scene that you made, is who's there? I imagine that at least the holy family's there, but one of the questions is, is Jesus arrived yet or not? Sometimes this is a tradition, in fact, in many places, in, in, when I was in Paris, I had the chance to go to midnight mass. And before mass started, the Archbishop actually came out and he put Jesus into the crash, into the manger, and that's what, how we began midnight mass. As it were, Jesus doesn't arrive until the night of the 24th, on Christmas the 25th. And so you, probably you have Mary and Joseph, but then are the shepherds there? Because they arrive as well on, on Christmas Day. And now if you put the Magi in or not, I mean, then, then that's an interesting question too, because usually you save those for the epiphany, but hey, if you got a nativity scene, maybe you wanna put everyone there, and also too, the angel. Actually, in, in the gospel, in the gospels, it describes a multitude of angels, but usually not nativity scenes, we just have one representing the.
I actually have them all, but my drawing, they all look like they're the same thing. Oh, well.
I understand. My friends and I did a, a cartoon in college and it was actually just stick figures. And for some reason, the newspaper published it. But the first person who came up with a crash in, in the historical record, the first one who had the idea of recreating the scene, the nativity scene, the, the scene in which our Lord was born, was Saint Francis of Assisi. And so I'd like to have us read together the account from his earliest biographer, Thomas of Chalano, a Franciscan, and him describing what Francis did. And Father John, how do you normally choose people to read for things like this?
We haven't, you have to do it.
Got it.
We wanna hear your voice.
Okay. Can everyone see this now?
There is a black line that's across the top of it for some reason. There you go.
Okay, so I wanna start, can everyone see where I'm beginning with, "Francis used to recall?"
Yes.
Okay. "So Francis used to recall with regular meditation the words of Christ and recollect his deeds with most attentive perception. Indeed, so thoroughly did the humility of the incarnation and the charity of the passion occupy his memory that he scarcely wanted to think of anything else." So here, if you wanna take those things that we talked about before, the Anselmian line and the SCOTUSic line, for Francis, they're both extensions of God's action, God's humility. It explains why he took the cross upon his shoulder, but it explains the deeper, the more profound reality of the Creator becoming one with creation. Thomas of Chalano then goes on, "We should note then, as a matter worthy of memory and something to be recalled with reverence, what he did three years prior to his death." He died in 1226, this happened in 1223, "at the town of Grecio on the birthday of our Lord Jesus Christ." Grecio was just really a small town, maybe something like Lafayette, in what's called the Riad Valley to the north of Rome, in the center of Italy, to the south of Assisi. "There was a certain man in that area named John who had a good reputation, but an even better manner of life. Blessed Francis loved him with special affection, since despite being a noble in the land and very honored in human society, he had trampled the nobility of the flesh under his feet and pursued instead the nobility of the spirit. As usual, Blessed Francis had John summoned him some fifteen days prior to the birthday of the Lord. "If you desire to celebrate the coming feast of the Lord together at Grecio," he said to him, "hurry before me and carefully make ready the things I tell you, for I wish to enact the memory of that babe who was born in Bethlehem, to see as much as is possible with my own bodily eyes the discomfort of his infant needs, how he lay in a manger, and how with an ox and an ass standing by he rested on hay. Once the good and faithful man had heard Francis's words, he ran quickly and prepared in that place all the things that the holy man had requested." Francis's desire in recreating the scene, as he says here to John, the villager who's going to help him, is that he wants to see the physicality of it. The Christian view and Francis's sense is that God, in becoming one of us, became really one of us, not an appearance, not a spirit. He lay as a baby in a manger, not even in a regular bed or a crib, but in a trough for livestock. And in fact, when he was born, his circumstances were such that there were animals around. And Francis, he wants to get into it, as they say, he really wants to see it, not just think about it. And so he decides he's gonna recreate it. "Finally, the day of joy has drawn near, the time of exaltation has come. From many different places the brethren have been called, as they could. The men and women of that land with exultant hearts prepare candles and torches to light up that night, whose shining star has enlightened every day and year. Finally, the holy man of God comes. And finding all things prepared, he saw them and was glad. Indeed, the manger is prepared, the hay is carried in, the ox and ass are led to the spot there. Simplicity is given a place of honor, poverty is exalted. Humility is commended, and out of Grecio is made a new Bethlehem. The night is lit up like day, delighting both man and beast. The people arrive ecstatic at this new mystery of new joy. The forest amplifies the cries and the boulders echo back the joyful crowd. The brothers sing, giving God due praise, and the whole night abounds with jubilation. The holy man of God stands before the manger, filled with heartfelt sighs, contrite in his piety, and overcome with wondrous joy. Over the manger the solemnities of the Mass are celebrated, and the priest enjoys a new consolation." Thomas of Chalano describes how the impact of this, the townspeople come from the village, which is where it is, and then Francis and where the friars gather are actually in, on, an outcropping of rock. And there they've set up the place where they're going, where they set up the manger. They bring the animals and people carry candles. And the result of this effect, seeing it in front of them, is one of joy. It makes everyone glad. It makes Francis glad, seeing it for himself. It makes the people happy, contented beyond belief. And even the priest who's celebrating the Mass experiences something that he hadn't before. "The holy man of God is dressed in the vestments of the Levites since he was a Levite, and with full voice sings the holy gospel." This is referring to the fact that Francis was a deacon. "Here is his voice, a powerful voice, a pleasant voice, a clear voice, a musical voice inviting all to the highest of gifts. Then he preaches to the people standing around him and pours forth sweet honey about the birth of the poor king and the poor city of Bethlehem. Moreover, burning with excessive love, he often calls Christ the babe from Bethlehem, whenever he means to call him Jesus. Saying the word Bethlehem in the manner of a bleeding sheep, he fills his whole mouth with sound, but even more with sweet affection. He seems to lick his lips wherever he uses the expressions Jesus or Babe from Bethlehem, tasting the word on his happy palate and savoring the sweetness of the word. The gifts of the Almighty are multiplied there, and a virtuous man sees a wondrous vision. For the man saw a light, little child lying lifeless in the manger, and he saw the holy man of God approach the child and awaken him from a dead sleep, deep sleep. Nor is this vision unfitting, since in the hearts of many the child Jesus has been given over to oblivion. Now he is awakened and impressed on their loving memory by his own grace through his holy servant Francis. At length the night's solemnities draw to a close, and everyone went home with joy." In that last part, what I wanna focus on is the word oblivion. In English, I think that now it denotes or connotates just kind of nothingness. As it were, the idea is that it just passes into, into the air. But oblivion, actually, one of the first instances that we have, this word as it is in Latin, that's the language that Thomas of Chalano wrote in, refers to a grammarian, an, a grammarian from ancient Rome. He used to know all the rules for everything when it came to the Latin language. You went up to him and you asked him, "How does this work? How do you make this verb like this?" He would know. But then in his old age, he suffered from memory loss and he couldn't remember anything anymore. All those rules, all the ways of conjugating and declining things, gone. And he got the nickname Oblivion. And this is what Thomas of Chalano says is the essence of what was experienced that day. Is that people in Francis's time, they, the people as a whole, they knew the story. At least they thought they knew. What time everyone understood could tell you the story of Jesus's birth, but then little by little, it had just passed into forgetfulness. The people who once knew something, knew it no more. But this, this recreation, this reenactment of Christ's birth, of God becoming one of us in such humble and simple circumstances, reanimated them. It brought the memory not just back, but truly back to life. And the experience of that was a joyful one, that everyone walked away from it changed. And often, when I will preach in Advent, what I will tell people to do, to make things really practical, is something like this. Most people have like a nativity set in their house. And I invite them to sit down with the youngest member, or if there aren't any young members in the house, just take a moment, maybe even for grace in, at Christmas meal, simply take the figures and retell the story, however short or long you want to make it. And as it were, recreate, reenact, retell the story of Jesus's birth. So that that wondrous mystery can bring joy to your lives as well, just as it brought to the people of Grecio when Francis began this tradition, the tradition of the crash. So for the final part of tonight, what I was going to do was to do a guided meditation from actually the gospel reading from last week, from us, the fourth Sunday of, of Advent. And so what a guided meditation is, so I apologize that you'll hear my voice one last time, but it is a time for, for deeper reflection, reflection on the gospel in, in a slightly different way than normal. It's also called imaginative prayer. It's when you use your imagination to help yourself go more deeply into an event, in this case, an event from scripture. But it's actually you who do all the work, and I as the leader, I just guide you. And so to, to do it though, there's emphasis on relaxing your body so as to clear your mind. So in this moment, I hope that you'll, you'll find a space that will reduce distractions as far as possible. You know, maybe making a little bit more distance or settling into your chair and really finding a position for your body that is comfortable, that you can maintain for an extended period of time. Because I'm going to read the scripture once and just take a, a few moments of silence, read the scripture once again, and then begin a series of guided questions so that you can find yourself in the story, in the scripture, and let God speak to you. So to prepare yourself, I actually invite you to close your eyes in this moment. And now to roll your head, to allow the muscles, especially in your neck and your shoulders, to let them relax. Now moving down, relax your arms and find somewhere, some, some placement for them, so that there's no tension. And continuing, relax your legs and feet, really finding a natural position for rest. And now likewise, focus on your chest and your stomach, your diaphragm, and let the tension go from there as well. And think about your breathing. Take a deep breath, inhaling slowly. Do it again. And hold your breath for three seconds. And slowly exhale. Breathe in. Hold. Breathe out. Breathe in. Hold. Breathe out. Become aware of this natural rhythm of breathing. Call to mind the breath of God, the breath of God that hovered over the waters of creation, the Spirit of God that was present at your creation, the Holy Spirit that's within you. "The angel Gabriel was sent from God to a town of Galilee called Nazareth, to a virgin betrothed to a man named Joseph of the house of David. And the virgin's name was Mary. "And coming to her, he said, 'Hail, full of grace, the Lord is with you.' But she was greatly troubled at what was said and pondered what sort of greeting this might be. Then the angel said to her, 'Do not be afraid, Mary, for you have found favor with God. Behold, you will conceive in your womb and bear a son, and you shall name him Jesus. He will be great and will be called Son of the Most High. And the Lord God will give him the throne of David his father, and he will rule over the house of Jacob forever, and of his kingdom there will be no end. But Mary said to the angel, 'How can this be, since I have no relations with a man?' And the angel said to her in reply, 'The Holy Spirit will come upon you, and the power of the Most High will overshadow you. Therefore, the child to be born will be called Holy, the Son of God. And behold, Elizabeth, your relative, has also conceived a son in her old age. And this is the sixth month for her who was called barren, for nothing will be impossible for God.' Mary said, 'Behold, I am the handmaid of the Lord. May it be done to me according to your word.' Then the angel departed from her. "The angel Gabriel was sent from God to a town of Galilee called Nazareth, to a virgin betrothed to a man named Joseph of the house of David. And the virgin's name was Mary. "And coming to her, he said, 'Hail, full of grace, the Lord is with you. But she was greatly troubled at what was said and pondered what sort of greeting this might be. Then the angel said to her, 'Do not be afraid, Mary, for you have found favor with God. Behold, you will conceive in your womb and bear a son, and you shall name him Jesus. He will be great and will be called Son of the Most High. And the Lord God will give him the throne of David his father, and he will rule over the house of Jacob forever, and of his kingdom there will be no end. But Mary said to the angel, 'How can this be, since I have no relations with a man?' And the angel said to her in reply, 'The Holy Spirit will come upon you, and the power of the Most High will overshadow you. Therefore, the child to be born will be called Holy, the Son of God. And behold, Elizabeth, your relative, has also conceived a son in her old age." And behold, Elizabeth, your relative, has also conceived a son in her old age. And this is the sixth month for her who is called barren, for nothing will be impossible for God." Mary said, "Behold, I am the handmaid of the Lord. May it be done to me according to your word." Then the angel departed from her. You're walking along a road in a small town. What time of year is it? You hear some birds. What kind are they? What do they sound like? As you walk, you pass by an old house. It's one of those that's built right next to the road. There's a window in the front that's open. Is the window big or small? Framed by wood or stone? Dark or light at the edges? Something catches your eye and you move towards it. In fact, you're able to see right inside the room. What does it look like? There's a young woman there. Is she alone with others? What is she doing? You see now what's grabbed your attention to what you recognize to be an angel on the other side of the room, opposite the young woman. He greets her by name. She turns to him. What's the expression on her face? The angel assures her with his voice. Is it deep or soft? He says, "Behold, you will conceive in your womb and bear a son, and you shall name him Jesus." The young woman reacts. What expression does she have on her face now? She speaks. Does she move when she talks? The angel reassures her and speaks of the young woman's cousin. Then there is a pause. Suddenly, it's silent, totally silent. The birds have stopped singing. The angel says nothing and the young woman is quiet. And you, are your hands on the windowsill, right at your side? Are you caught, standing still or leaning in so as to hear every word? The young woman speaks. "Behold, I am the handmaid of the Lord. May it be done to me according to your word." The angel then departs. How does he leave? And the young woman turns away as well. Where does she then go? You sense that the moment has ended and you step back onto the road. The birds have resumed and you go on your way. As you walk, you find yourself pondering, reflecting, waiting to see what comes of all this. And you stop to sit down for a moment and close your eyes. And then as you open them, you realize that you're not sitting on a road somewhere, but in your home, right there and right now. Continue to breathe deeply, but open your eyes. And think about something that happened during this time. A word, a phrase, a sight, an imagined sound, whatever you experienced that was particularly important to you. Reflect on it for a moment and consider how it might be something that God wants to tell you. And so we'll end our time together now with these words of sacred Scripture from Paul's letter to the Romans. "To him who can strengthen you according to my Gospel and the proclamation of Jesus Christ, according to the revelation of the mystery kept secret for long ages, but now manifested through the prophetic writings, and according to the command of the eternal God, made known to all nations, to bring about the obedience of faith, to the only wise God through Jesus Christ, be glory forever and ever." Amen. In the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit. Amen.
Ryan, thank you for being with us this evening. I think I'm going to look at the nativity scene in front of the altar church and in my own home a little differently this Christmas season. And thanks for opening that up for us and giving us the possibility of entering into it more personally, more deeply, and looking for the message that it will have for me, for you, for each one of us coming from God. Appreciate it very much. And Merry Christmas to you and good luck with your work. Enjoy your visit with your family in Southern California. And when do you go back to becoming a Roman, roaming Catholic?
As soon as the visa paperwork comes through.
And back to?
And back to Rome. So hopefully, hopefully about March.
How's Pope Francis?
He seems to be doing well. It's been a while since I've seen him in the flesh, but my understanding is he's doing well.
Ryan, what are you doing in Rome?
I'm working in, there's an institute in Rome called Quaraki, and this is where certain Franciscans do research related to some early documents in the Order, in Order's history. So part of what I'm doing right now is working on some economic texts from the beginning of the Order and the friars writing on economic questions.
Did you see Bill Short when he was there?
He's my director. Brother Bill is the director of this institute.
I see. Okay. Yeah, you saw him then.
Yeah, I see him every day.
Carl Piestr knows a lot of those Franciscans because he was on the board of the Franciscan School of Theology for many years. Next week, on Wednesday, at our Town Hall gathering, we will be regaled by Father Tom Bonacci. He's been with us many times over the years with, again, like Ryan has, inviting us into the Scriptures in a very personal and direct way. And his topic with us when he's here will be, let me get the exact title of it, "Images of Hope in the Midst of a Pandemic: A Reflection on Luke, Chapter 2, Verse 8." And that verse says, "Nearby shepherds were living in the fields guarding their sheep at night." Tom will be fascinating as to how he's going to draw us into that passage and what he'll draw out of that passage with us. So we'll see you next week. Remember on tomorrow evening at four o'clock, there is a livestreamed celebration of Christmas Eve Eucharist, which you can connect through the timely Perpetuan or on the parish website. And then on Friday, Christmas Day, in the morning at 9:30 or 11:30, we'll celebrate Christmas with our Liturgy of the Word on Zoom. So I hope to see you at one of those celebrations. Have a peaceful evening, everyone. And again, thanks, Ryan, and God bless you and I'll give you a wonderful Christmas in the midst of our challenging time.